They have your...
Yeah.
Yeah, I didn't put it up, I guess.
Oh, good, because it's sideways on the...
Just turn your head.
Good evening.
Good evenings. How are you? Good to see you guys again.
Hello.
Hello.
Brian, you want to move that microphone over close to you?
So, I'm Megan. I've been here before, but I'm the Assistant Town Engineer. So, this is a traffic light study that we employed VHB to conduct. So, we hired VHB to do a traffic study identifying any possible improvements to the current flashing yellow lights that we have in town. The flashing yellow lights are not compliant with the MUTD standards, which is the manual for Uniform Traffic Control Devices that is put out by the Federal Highway Administration. So, VHB has recommended that we remove those flashing yellow lights and replace them with rectangular rapid flashing beacons. Do you see my fun animations? So, the proposed locations are... Don't even remember the order that I put them in. If you click through them, they'll go through and they'll show them. So, Cedar and Francis Wyman. Then there is... Win Street and Sears Street. And Win Street and Harriet. So, rapid flashing beacons are warning devices that use high-intensity LED lights that flash when pressed to grab drivers' attention. They're not on constantly. They are only on when pedestrians press the button for them. So, just some general information on these is that they each intersection costs about $20,000 to $30,000. They're ideal for crossings that do not meet standards for full traffic lights, such as these. And they increase pedestrian safety because there is no walk signal. Cars have to stop before pedestrians cross so that it doesn't give pedestrians the false sense of security with a walk sign. They still are waiting for cars. So, basically, you just press the walk button. The lights will begin to flash. Once all the cars stop, you're safe to cross. So, we are just looking to replace the lights that are in compliance. There's one other light in town that's on Cambridge Street, and MassDOT will be replacing that one with rapid flashing beacons when they do the resurfacing with 3A within the next year or two. I'm not sure when they're exactly replacing that, but that is on the plans for them to replace with the 3A paving.
Question? You can ask a question. I'm having trouble looking at my picture of what these lights actually look like.
Chuck, could you go back to the screen on their phone?
I think, Mr. Chairman, there's actually one in front of Wilmington High School.
Yep.
If you want, if you go down there.
There are some in Bill Ricker's Town Center. There's some in Tuxbury, Wilmington. A lot of communities do have them around. We just haven't necessarily had a need for them yet. So, this is where we're looking to put them in. The current flashing lights are just not compliant, and typically, I'm not sure that they're always looked at by drivers correctly. So, we're trying to find a way to improve our safety for pedestrians walking.
Oh, yeah. I cringe every time I see these kids walking across. I think they've got this false sense of security when they get that walk button. And of course, they're with their cell phones in their hand and just not paying any attention.
Exactly.
At all. Hopefully, this is a better system than what's out there currently. Is it... I'm having a trouble. Is it going to look like a traffic light?
So, if you...
Can't see this one.
If you can go back to... I have them in one of my slides. So, yeah.
It would be similar to the ones like right out here on Center Street. The, you know, the rectangular signs and kind of where the arrows are that point down to the sidewalk.
Yeah.
There's two LEDs on either side that kind of flash back and forth.
See that? I got that. Okay.
So, one of the other issues, so the kind of the two big issues that I think MUTCD points out with those old-style flashing lights that we have is that, one, as Megan said, you get the white cross symbol, and everyone feels like I can just cross without looking. And then, the other issue is that the light is constantly flashing. So, every day, no matter what time of the day you go by, if you're a motor vehicle, that's all you see is a flashing light. You start to ignore it because it's flashing every day.
They won't activate until somebody gets the button going. I get you. Okay, great.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Is there one on Cambridge Street by Arlington Road?
It's Grapevine's.
Something like that.
The... So, the Mercedes-Benz dealership, I believe, sought permission from the state to put one in over there by Arlington Road.
That's one of these, right?
Yep.
Yeah, so it's right down by where Mu was. There's one of these down there. If I may, I think these are much safer. Like you said, the flashing light becomes part of the landscape, and people just, if they see it every day, every day, they just keep it part of their daily routine. But where these aren't on all the time, they will grab someone's attention. So, I think it's a great idea to change these.
Very good. Thanks, Chairman. Funding source? Is this coming out of the operating budget? Is this an article at town meeting? What are we thinking?
So, we are planning to do the Francis Wyman one with a paving that's supposed to be taking place this year. And we will probably be able to take a little bit from the traffic lights that we currently have. And then, the other ones on Win Street, we are going to try to ask when we do... We're doing the Mountain Road traffic light, so we want to lump those in together and kind of fix all of Win Street at the same time. And that's kind of how we're planning on doing that. And those are the only three that we plan on doing at this time.
Okay. That's great. Is there a plan for other identified locations? Do we have other identified locations, whether they be current or non, that would warrant an upgrade?
Not at this time. These are the ones that we really need to address first. If they work and people are requesting them, we would have to look at some standards of where to put them and what we would need to do to warrant them. Because we would have to have a set of standards. We wouldn't want them to go up in the middle of neighborhoods that don't warrant them. So, we would have to have a traffic committee meeting and kind of discuss the parameters for those.
That's great.
Yeah, unfortunately, the new MUTCD that's coming out doesn't really provide any guidance on where to put them. It just says you're allowed to use them. So, kind of leave it on communities to come up with internal policy.
All right. Thank you, guys. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. Anybody? Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a question out of curiosity sake. How did we find out we weren't in compliance with our old ones? Were we flagged? Were we fined? Did someone...
If you... The MUTD standards that, when they've been put out, I mean, when you read through them, those are not warranted in them. So, we knew that they were out of compliance with the manual. So, that's when we hired VHB to address them.
Did the standard change recently, or is that what happened?
I'm not sure when it changed for them to be in compliance. We just have had some concerns raised about them, and we had concerns ourselves. So, that's when we employed a study to go and look at them.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Welcome. Joe? Yeah, two quick ones. Time frame?
So, the first one we plan to do is Francis Wyman and Cedar. The plan is to pay Francis Wyman this upcoming summer. So, we plan to put that one in first. And then, it would most likely be 2025 when the other two would be done.
Okay. Secondly, on Win Street and Mountain Road, is the light still going in on that we did approve a light down there, right?
So, the study and the design is taking place now. The design is, and we plan to ask for the money for it in town meeting in May.
Okay.
So, as long as that goes through, we are planning to go forward with it. The design is taking place now. It just hasn't fully been funded yet.
We're going to have a pedestrian crosswalk right at that corner there. I forget the Harriet, I think it is, right?
Yep.
And we're going to have a... Is it going to be a full traffic light if it gets approved down on Mountain Road and Win Street?
Yes, but the design is still taking place. It hasn't fully been configured yet.
I think it's a great idea to do that. Thank you. Yeah, agreed. I think I'm glad we're addressing this. Okay, very good. If there's nothing further, would entertain a motion to approve the DPW request for pedestrian crossing lights.
So moved.
Second?
Moving second. Anything further? Being none, no favor?
Aye.
Aye, five, zero, zero. Wow, thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 254, approval of street opening moratorium 59 to 63 Middlesex Turnpike. I'm going to pass the gavel to Mr. Morandi. Recuse myself from this agenda item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Murphy?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Thomas Murphy here for Noria Energy Corp. With me is Mike Durant, who's the Construction Permitting Manager for Noria. Noria owns or operates the Shell gas station down on the Middlesex Turnpike. Back this spring, they appeared before the planning board because they wanted to rehab the site. And if you've driven by there recently, you'll notice that the gas station's currently closed. The site is under construction. They're essentially building a new convenience store, cashier place where the D'Angelo Sub Shop used to be. And they're putting new gas pumps over on the site where the previous gas station was. So, that project started, the construction started this summer. Has been progressing well. It's on schedule to be completed in February. They hit some ledge in the fall, slowed them down just a little bit. And consequently, when they got to the point where they had to tie into the gas line out on Middlesex Turnpike, they missed it by literally less than a week from when the November 15th moratorium kicks in. So, they spoke, or the contractor spoke to the DPW down there, who said we had to, Noria had to file a request for a waiver with you folks, which I contacted the town administrator, sent him a letter along those lines. I also checked in with Tom Hayes. He indicated to me that they usually recommend against these, but if they are approved, they have a set of conditions that he typically requests. I showed those to my client. They were fine with those. Talked to my client about the duration of the job. They said it's going to be a one-day job. The gas lines on their side of Middlesex Turnpike, so they can open it, tie in, close it, and be in and out of there in less than a day. From what I understand, National Grid has already submitted application for permit to open up the street. So, that part of it's already in place. So, the plan is, from Noria's end, is where this board to grant the variance or the waiver, they would probably get this done and closed up within the next week. Their contract is ready to go. So far, Mother Nature's been cooperating. So, if you look at the 10-day forecast, we're not going to have any noristers hopefully over the next week or so. So, we're here this evening with Mike here, and he has, he can answer any technical questions you might have about the job or the timing. But we'd be requesting a waiver of the moratorium to allow Noria to get into, excavate Middlesex Turnpike, tie into the National Grid gas line, close it back up. So, that's basically what we're here for tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. We'll start with you. Mike, any questions?
Yeah, one of the notes here, Tom, on the backup is that National Grid won't run the gas line until the structure's weather tight. Do you have a structure completion date?
It should be weather tight over the next few weeks, couple of weeks. They already have the roof on.
Could you just bring the mic in a little bit closer? I'm old. You're talking real soft. I'll go with the first one. Go ahead.
Thank you. Just to restate, over the next couple of weeks, they'll have that built on weather tight.
Okay. And this would be a one-day job you want to do in the next week or so?
That's the hope, yeah.
Yes. Okay. No further questions.
Mr. Priest?
I have no questions. If you're saying this is begun in a day, and we want to, you know, give them a day or two, you know, I'm fine with that. I don't want to get in the habit of, you know, just, there's no point in the moratorium. We're constantly opening week after week. But, you know, if you say it can be done in a day, then, you know, I see the reason why we couldn't, you know, make an accommodation so that you don't fall into hardship.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I also have no problem with the one-day thing. The only thing I would do is add maybe like call it a sixth condition that it not be done on a Saturday or Sunday because between Trader Joe's and H-Mot, the Turnpike, it's very, very busy on Saturdays and Sundays. So, to include it has to be done during the week, not the weekend.
That's not a problem. Thank you. Mr. Sieger, you got anything on this?
I have no further comments. I would just request that the board include engineering standard street opening conditions as part of your approval.
Well, I have no problem. Oh, go ahead.
I'm just going to make a motion.
I don't have a problem with this at all. I think the one day would be good. I don't know where they hit ledge before. Is there any idea if there's ledge down there? Or they just got to, is it already... Do you know exactly where they're digging? I'm thinking maybe two days tops, back-to-back, get them done.
Two days tops if they ran it to unforeseen conditions. But they've already done the disconnect out there.
Okay. They're already done the disconnect?
Previously for the demolition.
Okay.
That was done in, that was done in one day.
Well, that should be at one day then. You don't need the second day if it's already been disconnected. So, I'm okay with this. I'm okay with the one day and get that business up and going. So, I get a motion on this?
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. If I may, is there a window of time that we want the one day to fall in? Or are we just saying...
Think of that. What's the scheduling look like for National Grid? Do you have an idea when this is going to be?
Since National Grid has already submitted to DPW, it sounds like, again, within the next couple of weeks that they're going to be ready to get out there and perform the work.
Okay, and you do understand all the conditions from DPW with the ground? And if it snows, does it over, if it's all that can... There's a lot of conditions there from him, but that's what we're going with.
Yeah, I don't think that's anything that we haven't encountered before. We're completely...
I didn't want to word that, where it's going to be.
I'm looking for a...
We're going to count it up?
Yeah. Well, the weather looks good all this week. So, I'm willing to say, make a motion that it be until the 22nd because the following week is Christmas.
I mean, if we want to give them to the end of the year, it's just, we're saying one day between this day and this day. Right? So, I mean, so from today through the 31st, if that's amenable?
I think that would be very fair, Mr. Chairman. The, I mean, Noria's and their contractor are ready to go this afternoon. But we're dealing with National Grid, and sometimes they have their own timetable and things. So, we're just, giving us a little leeway would be helpful.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the request for the street opening contingent upon the five conditions issued by the town engineer and the sixth condition that it not be opened on a Saturday or a Sunday up until December 31st.
Second?
Motion. We have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, against, four, zero, zero.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, members of the board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Here you go, Mr. Chairman. You're all set. I don't know how to do it.
It's like riding a bike.
All right, item 255 is a public hearing. The notice has been posted on the town website and various local media outlets. Chair will declare the meeting open and ask that the board waive the reading of the official...
Second notice.
Is a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five, zero, zero. Okay. Verizon Cable License Renewal.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have the town's cable licensing attorney, Bill Solomon, here to give the presentation to the board.
Bill?
Hi, Bill.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, board members. It's good to be back here. I was here before, if you remember, on the Comcast license renewal and briefly on the RCN transfer. So, William Solomon, your special counsel for cable. So, good news as of Friday. And this was completed with Verizon working on a number of months together with your staff, with Whitney Haskell and the town administrator. We met with Verizon here at Town Hall. I had many negotiation sessions with their counsel, John Harrington, out of the Boston area. And as I said on Friday, we finalized the very final provisions. I provided a license summary for you, but let me just briefly go through that very, very quickly. It's a five-year license in contrast to the Comcast license because Verizon seeks shorter licenses. It's hard to force someone to take a longer license if they don't want that. There is a three-year unilateral out by Verizon. But in exchange for that, this five-year license with this three-year unilateral out provides five years of PEG, Public Educational Government Access Funding, five years of funding within that three-year period. In fact, it's paid within two years, 45 days, and then one year thereafter and one year thereafter. Very importantly, the PEG capital funding, which is a solid number, is $150,000, three payments of $50,000. That's in contrast with the current license, which had a $0.66 per month PEG fee and INET fee per subscriber that was only paid once a year in March and also was subject to going down. If the cable company lost subscribers, we're in the modern world. That tends to be the direction. So, now, in addition to your 5% of gross annual revenues of a cable company to operate your community television program, the PEG funding will be the $150,000, all paid within two years. So, if Verizon were to exercise its three-year unilateral out, all of that capital money would have been paid within the first two years, which is a very favorable provision. In addition, for the first time on the Verizon cable system, the town with notice, 270-day written notice from this board, which I can provide for the town administrator tomorrow, will get its first high-definition PEG access channel. And that'll actually be before the Comcast PEG access channel. So, that's a real strength because, you know, PEG access has been looking for high definition for a while. As to which channel would be made high definition, that'll be up to you. And you can discuss that going forward. Traditionally, I would have thought public. But in the modern day, a lot of folks like, a lot of towns like the government channel in high definition. So, the folks at home can read the screens carefully on the presentations, the financial numbers, the plans and other such documents. Wrapping up, the... Let's see. Cable, the PEG capital grant I went over, cable service to public buildings. If the town seeks cable service to public buildings by Verizon, but generally, it's done by Comcast, so it doesn't need to occur. Let me check one other item, and I'll have the final one wrapped up. Yeah, and I do want to, one mistake, which I mentioned to town administrator on the summary, on the PEG access channels, the third bullet, you have three, then inside, it says two, three parentheses, two, three parentheses, three. So, you have three PEG access channels now. And going forward with that 270-day period, you'll have a fourth channel, which is the high-definition channel. Finally, let me say that with respect to public policy provisions, your protection of your right of way, trying to make sure that Verizon pays you a full definition of gross revenue when they pay you your 5% and also making sure that the town is legally protected. There's no better license in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts with Verizon than this license. So, it adds on to what the town had previously done, strengthens those provisions even more, particularly with respect to the definition of gross revenue. And so, I would strongly recommend that the board vote this favorably. It was important to myself, the staff agreed, to have this license signed or voted and signed in 2023. When the calendar year changes, corporations can change their approach. We worked hard at this, and we like to see this signed. It has an effective date of the 29th. If you revoke today, this license would go into effect on December 29th. Be happy to answer any questions you have or...
Okay. All right, Bill. Bill, thank you very much. Sounds like you're pretty busy with these negotiations. Start, Tom. Jim, any thing from you?
Thank you, Mr. Jim. Not really a question, but a comment. I think locking into the fix 150 where streaming's taken over a lot of households, you're going to see the number of subscribers go down. And I do believe that that's happening already. So, I like the idea of locking in that 150 flat rate.
Exactly. Thank you.
That's all.
Thanks, Chairman. Bill, thank you for this. This is fantastic. And I just want to echo what Jim was saying about the 150 flat rate. It's a smart move, you know, for all the reasons that he said. To add on to that, though, my question to you is this. State legislature's got a couple of bills roaming around the House right now to include streaming into this whole kit and caboodle. Do you have any sense of where that's at right now? And if there is traction toward it? Because I think that it would be a win for us as local communities to gain access to funds provided by streaming services.
Yes, a good point. So, let me just answer that in two parts. With respect to this license, this license has, as discussed, a broad definition of gross revenue. So, as of now, most cable companies or companies that provide cable include streaming to the extent that it's bought through and by the cable service that you have. So, if you have cable service with Comcast, and part of that is you could have Netflix with that Comcast cable service, currently, that is treated as cable service in most cases. You know, that could change. And so, one of the strengths of this license is that its broad definition would at least put the town in the best position to argue with the rest of the country that, no, you know, while you can have Netflix separate or you could have Apple TV, when it's part and parcel of what you're selling as a cable service, then that's part of your cable service. So, part one is where, you know, we try to protect ourselves as best possible with respect to making sure that's a broad definition. On your other question, it's like, what am I, a priest? Yes, that's exactly right. There's a bill in the House and the Senate that would apply the franchise fee to streaming revenue separate and apart from being a cable service exactly. And in fact, an email came across today. It said, "Good news from Mass Access." So, maybe it's good news on that. That is currently, you know, trying to work its way through. The strength is that never has community television been understood and perceived as more important. And the reps and the senators all work and appear at the local community television channels to get their message out. So, they know how important that is. And as people then go to the other formats apart from cable, that revenue loss can be significant and will really impact PEG access. So, that's, as you're, that's the reasons why there's some hope. But as all legislation, there are folks on the other side who want to claim that the earth will end if that's passed. And so, the more that this board and other boards do to let your rep and senator know that if community television is going to exist in the same strong ways in the future as it does now, that there needs to be some equality with other folks who are providing video also having to pay toward community television. But the good news is we've done everything possible and more to protect ourselves. But the good news is we've done everything possible and more to protect ourselves here as best possible, and the more you stay up with that legislation and with your representatives and senator, the greater chance there is to pass.
All right. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Okay, welcome. Michael?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Bill, I'd also like to echo my fellow board members. Thank you for all your work on this. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Quick question out of curiosity's sake. What kind of, I know you do a lot of work in this arena and these type of contracts. What kind of impacts are you seeing with cord cutting and other types of alternative ways to get your TV that's affecting these type of contracts? Are these going to be like, go by the way the fast and in the future? Are these going to fall by the wayside? Or are you seeing the numbers go down? What are you, I'm just curious on how those type of things are impacting?
Great question, and I have the, I can open it up. I have the full numbers. But Burlington is, you know, in the trend in that there's a, there's cord cutting and cord shaving, people dropping cable and people shaving it. You know, I used to work in Stonem and live in Stonem. You know, we're not Somerville where everyone just is on their phone, so that there's been a, for the last three years, a decline. And what I anticipate is that cable will continue, continue to be a, for those companies providing cable, a relatively large percentage of their business, whether that's, you know, they'll have 50% of the subscribers they had before or 60%, that there are folks who like the benefits of cable, which are that there is the bundling, there's sports, as we know, the cable still has more of the contracts, not all, but more of the contracts with sports where people want sports. And then finally, sort of like, I compare it to the War of the Worlds and when the oxygen got the invaders from the outside. What happens is that companies that are streaming, as you know, were doing that as loss leaders. The idea was to get subscribers, to get business, and not necessarily to make a profit right away. This past year, what's happened is that these companies are now saying, you know, we have to earn a profit, and to do that, what they're doing is raising prices. And so what you find is that what might have seemed like a tremendous value to folks up until now ceases to be perceived as that value, and the cable package, by putting it together, is able to sell its services in comparison at a very competitive rate. So what I anticipate is that there will be some continued reduction, but I do think that will level off. And the real question is whether companies believe that continuing to provide cable service is in their financial interest. I think Comcast clearly thinks that. Verizon, 70 years ago, told Wall Street it would be out of the cable service in five years. They're still there. Why? Because Verizon is an excellent cable company and has very loyal subscribers, and it's tough to say you're going to leave a business where you have paying customers who are very happy with the service. So the good news is because they do what they do so well, they have a harder time leaving that and going to the future. So great question, but for now, what the good news is we're, at this moment in time, together with Verizon, which was very cooperative, because they could have taken a different approach. They could have said, "We're not a cable service. We're not going to get a cable license." That's what AT&amp;T said across the country. Or they could have said, "We can leave, we don't, we can leave a license at any time. We don't, we can just move on." But rather, they understand that this is a, an agreement for both sides' benefit. There's consideration on both sides. The town is doing a contract where they're expecting financial return in terms of the payment for PEG and a commitment for the term of the license. Verizon, to its credit, recognizes that, and so while it seeks flexibility with the five-year license instead of 10 with the three-year out, by the same token, it understands that in exchange for that, it needs to pay a premium and needs to create a certainty because community television and towns can't run on uncertainty. So I'd like to thank Verizon and its attorney, John Harrington, from Wakefield, out of Boston. The firm represents Verizon nationally, for their cooperation. You know, we always fight over some issues. We did. I think we reached a very good resolution, but it wouldn't have been possible if they hadn't taken that positive approach.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Great. Mike, Joezo?
Nope, no comments, no nothing. Just a great job. It's, I can't we go wrong.
Agreed, agreed. Bill, let me just ask you, where do we stand with the other two cable companies?
All good. Well, Comcast, we signed last year, and that was a, even a larger effort because, as you remember, the key was that Verizon, that Comcast was providing an institutional network, the lifeblood of your telecommunications, your departments and school, and we transitioned from Comcast providing that INET to the town leasing it at a very low cost and also getting more capital dollars. So we're good for another nine years. And RCN, we transferred, I believe RCN might be up in two years or so. So I'll double-check that, but we'll be back with the RCN license. RCN, one of the great companies, you know, we're lucky in Burlington and Stonem to have them, but they've been bought out by larger investment companies, a good investment company. So, and I'm starting to deal with them in a few communities. So we'll see where RCN is. You know, it's good, it's great to have a third company, and we see, we hope they continue, and so far, I think they will, but I'll update the board on that as we go along, and I'll first check to see what the license expiration is.
Okay, very good, very good. Thanks for that update. Is there anybody in the room as questions, concerns, comments on this agreement? Anybody online? I'm not seeing any. Entertainer motion to...
Motion to close the public hearing, Mr. Chairman.
Motion, second from Joe. Anything further? Being none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting is closed. Okay, anything further for Mr. Solomon from the board? Paul, do you have anything?
No, I just want to thank Attorney Solomon and Whitney Haskell. They worked countless hours on this. As you guys can tell, it's pretty complicated material, and I just want to say thank you to them for their tremendous efforts on this license.
Yeah, I'd have to say we're in good hands here. All right, entertainer motion to approve the Verizon Cable License Renewal Contract.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I will read the motion we have here. I hereby move that the board as Cable Television Licensing Issuing Authority vote as follows: To grant the subject cable television renewal license with an effective date of December 19th, 2023 to Verizon, New England Incorporated. All terms and conditions contained in the renewal license have been agreed to by Verizon. Verizon, by and through its authorized representative, will execute this renewal license as set out on the signature page.
Okay, there's the motion, the second.
Second.
Second by Jim. Anything further? Being none, all in favor?
Aye.
Five zero zero.
Thank you, Andy, you know, the advantage of being here as I could sign the license right here now, and thank you very much. I'll do that. Appreciate, thank you for the time.
Good to see you again. Enjoy the holiday, Bill.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you. Thank you, Paul.
Item 256, citizens' time. Is anybody here tonight for citizens' time? Anybody online here for citizens' time? Not seeing anything. Okay, item 257, approval. Been a number of annual license renewals, quite a few, and we're not going to, not going to do them one by one because we will be there till midnight. If you guys don't mind, we'll take them collectively unless someone has, would like to, you know, if there's one or two you want to pull aside and have a further discussion on, we can do that, but why don't we start with...
Mr. Chairman, you want to hold in holders?
What?
In holders?
All right, when I, okay, when we, why don't we start with...
Send you the addresses.
It's okay with you guys, in the order I got them here. Amusement licenses, there's one, two, three, four, five amusement licenses that I have here. Chairman? Mr. Morandi.
Yes. Mr. Segura, what would be the best way for us to do this? All at once? Go individuals? Read every single one of them off?
I'd say it's at the board's discretion, so depending upon how you wish to pursue it. We have all the backup that will be included in the minutes in terms of how you want to do it, but thinking the previous years, you've kind of asked if anyone had any questions that you want to hold out, and then you sort of voted the whole group of them. If there's any specific ones that you want to discuss, you can set them aside.
That would be the best way to do it. Does everyone have a chance to look it up, all the names, seven or eight in every single category? Anybody want to hold anything?
I just want to hold the in holders. Excepting one's missing.
Okay. But we should apply the contingency of part two.
Yeah, so if you're going to vote them all or minus in holders, just I would hold livery out as well so that you can put the condition in the livery one because that is going to fall in the livery.
Livery and in holder. Okay, amusement licenses, one, two, three, four, five. Questions, concerns on amusement licenses? Being none. Motion to approve amusement licenses. Moved by Joe.
Second.
Second by Nick. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five zero zero. Entertainment licenses, again, good number of them here. Any questions, concerns on the list of entertainment licenses for renewal? There being none. Motion to approve the license by Joe.
Second.
Second by Michael. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Hold livery. Theater renewal, we have just one. Motion to approve AMC Theater by Joe.
Second.
Second by Michael. Favor?
Aye.
Aye, five zero zero. Theater of, where, weights and measures renewal, Quinn Perkins. Motion approved, moved by Joe.
Second.
Second by Mike. All in favor?
Aye.
Five zero zero. Victorias license. And there's a bunch of them. It's three pages worth. Someone's going to Florida. Anybody concerns or questions about the Victorias license? Being none. Entertainer motion to approve the Victorias license.
Second.
By Joe, second by Michael. All in favor?
Aye.
Five zero zero. Liquor renewals. And again, I've been, I've been assured that all of these folks are in good standing and all fees are paid and so on and so forth. Everybody's in good shape here. Any questions on the liquor renewals?
Quick question on the liquor one. Do we have the newest one on Wilmington Road on here? I don't see it. They're not approved yet?
Yeah, they're not approved.
Oh, not approved yet? Okay, still in process?
Yeah, and it would go through, it would come on this.
The one will be on this?
Be a renewal.
Okay.
For them, essentially.
Thank you.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the liquor licenses?
Second.
Joe, second by Mike. All in favor?
Aye.
Five zero zero. Cafeteria, cafeteria licenses. Questions, concerns on the cafeteria licenses? There being none. Motion by Joe.
Second.
Second by Mike. All in favor?
Aye.
Five zero zero. Class one auto licenses, six of them. Questions, concerns on class one auto license? Being none. Motion by Joe.
Second.
Second by Michael. All in favor?
Aye.
Five zero zero. All my... The two, last two, in holder?
We have class two.
We have class two. Which one is it? I don't have that. Okay, I'll take your word for it, class two. Okay, thank you. I wonder if it was one. There it is, all righty. Questions, concerns on class two renewals?
All move.
Being none.
Second.
By Joe, second by Mike. All in favor?
Aye.
Five zero zero. Thank you. What's that leave, Joe?
Psychic.
Psychic.
I was told that one's already approved.
I didn't feel like you'd ask that.
Questions, concerns? Psychic one.
This one with the jokes.
Any questions?
All move. Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Joe. Not even on here.
The broken taxi, pending required documents. So can we approve that tonight? Do we let it go until the documents come in, then put it on agenda later? Or what do we do with that?
Joe, could you please just approve it contingent upon receipt of the final paperwork that we're waiting on, and then we'll be all set moving forward once they turn the paperwork?
So I'll make a motion to approve Burlington Taxi, pending required documents. As long as they get to that, we'll forward from there.
Motion by Joe.
Second.
Second by Michael. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Five zero zero. And Jim, in holder, you wanted to hold that for...
Yeah, we have eight hotels, and I only see seven here. Sinesta Simply Suites. 130 Middlesex Turnpike.
Which one?
Sinesta Simply Suites.
They're not listed on, do they have a...
It's the old candlestick.
So someone changed names.
Yeah, they did.
All right, well, we'll check it. Like I said, we've checked both Sinestas, and this is what we've come up with on who has contacted us, and then they have not filed paperwork.
130 Middlesex Turnpike.
While I'm pulling this up, do we do livery?
I think we did. Oh, I thought we took them all.
Yeah.
We did? Yes. Okay. You can see how well I was paying attention.
Can we do that one?
That's the one Nick just asked about, livery.
Livery. I don't think, actually, I don't think we did.
We don't think we did.
We didn't do that part of Burlington Taxi.
Oh, I said. That was just conditions of renewal. We didn't do livery for the shuttle up and pro limo.
Correct.
Right. We haven't done that yet, so I'll make a new motion to approve livery.
Second.
Second. Motion and second on livery. All in favor?
Aye.
Five zero zero. Back to your in holders.
Only, you know, probably a job that there were eight hotels in town.
Why don't we approve the seven we have, and Lynn's staff will look into...
We'll bring it to the board at the next meeting.
Fair enough.
What's that?
That's the extension state.
No, no, extension states, we'll settle that.
Make motion to approve the seven that are listed.
Second.
Motion by both, second by Mike. All in favor?
Aye.
Five zero zero. Who does all this? That's a lot of work, keep a track of all this stuff. So God bless you, your staff.
Staff in the office handled all this. They've been working on it for over a month, so there's a lot of effort that goes into it. So kudos to Kim, Ellie, and Lynn for all their work on the licensing. It gets smoother and smoother every year. This year, they debuted an online application process, so we anticipate that it will get even more smoother as we move forward in the future, so.
Super.
Great job by our team.
Yeah, agreed, agreed. Great. Okay, thank you. A little music to go with that?
Oh, Bill? Please, we're going to...
That's where it's at.
I just quieted it.
Complimenting, the compliments that we were just handing out. Okay. Okay, where are we? Item 258, approval, January 24, 2024, tell me any warrant articles. In your backup, you've got, you've got the list here. Paul, anything you want to add to the, or Lynn?
Number six and number eight have been withdrawn.
Six and eight.
Under zoning.
Six and eight. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for every town meeting. The board is asked under the bylaws to add the warrant articles to create the warrant. Everything's been in, all the deadlines have passed, and this is what the warrant will look like for the January town meeting. So we will bring at a future meeting, we'll bring back, and the board can vote on the individual articles, whether in support or not, at one of our January meetings. individual articles, whether in, in support or not, at one of our January meetings before town meeting. But for tonight's meeting, we're just asking the board to vote to add these on so we can get to work preparing the warrant for town meeting.
Very good, very good. Questions on the board? Anybody questions on this? No? Everybody good? Okay, entertainer motion approved for the-
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the index of articles for the January town meeting.
Second.
Right, Jim, second by Michael. Anything further? Being none, all in favor?
Aye.
Five zero zero. On January 22nd. The start time on that, did they change the start time on town meeting again? Did we?
Seven.
Seven.
Out of seven?
Seven.
Thought we were going to get down something earlier.
It's 7:30.
Oh, okay, so we're making some progress there. Okay, and approve the select board meeting dates for 2024. Hope you had an opportunity to look them over.
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting dates for 2024. My second.
My vote, Joe, second by Nick. Anything further on the calendar? Being none, all in favor?
Aye.
Five zero zero. And I have 260 minutes, regular session, 11:13, 2023, 11:27, 2023, and strategic planning session on 11:15.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve the regular minutes from November 13th and strategic planning minutes from November 15th.
And what about the 27th?
I will include the regular meeting in November 27th also. My motion.
Thank you kindly. Is there a second?
Second.
Anything further? Being none, all in favor?
Aye.
Five zero zero. Brings us to subcommittee reports. Mr. Spay, hold me that down there then.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to report to our board that we had the first meeting of our police department, police station building committee, and I think the meeting went great. Looks like we have a, a great group that is going to advise our board going forward. We, it was basically an introductory meeting, and there was actually some interesting discussion already. So I think, I'd like to thank the board for helping put together that, that committee and where you look forward to progress and reporting back with the progress. Also quickly, just shout out to Parks and Rec for another great tree lighting, and DPW for the lights. Looks great out there, and wish everyone a happy holiday season. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Mr. Morandi?
Just real quick, there's only a couple weeks left of the hunting season, so be aware that December 31st is over. Thank you again for another fabulous season for the archery hunters in the town of Burlington.
Very good, very good. Jim?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The fire department, again, was busy during the month of November. I don't have the number of calls because I left that in my car, but they, because it's the holiday season, they do want to pass along a few safety tips as far as making sure your smoke detectors and CO detectors are working, having your heating equipment maintained and used properly, proper use of display of holiday lights, trees, the tree lights, lights and decorations, proper use of candles, and also if there's smoke, if you have your fireplace going or wood stove and there's smoke in the house, find out what's causing it, get your chimney cleaned and inspected. And the only other, we talked, I sat with the chief today, we talked about the hiring process and how we're, you know, trying to backfill some vacancies and get the ball rolling on those. We should be having one or two vacancies in the near future filled. But also, the new tower truck has been ordered, and that will probably take around two years to get here, but it has been ordered.
Excellent, very good. Very good. Thank you, Chairman. Mr. Priest?
Thanks, Chairman. Just a quick update, we officially kicked off our planning for our new Civic Expo, which will be in January?
January 17th.
Town Clerk Amy Warfield and Burlington Buzz's very own Nikki Cadillac are helping us to co-organize and coordinate, but it'll be a evening where you can come down and, if you've ever been to a trade show before, you know, you get to meet with representatives from departments within the town. Should be a good evening, an opportunity to, you know, put faces to names and, you know, educate yourself further about how the town, you know, operates on a, on a department level, which is, to me, interesting, and I know, I'm a dork. Every year, I say the same thing, you know, as the temperatures drop, you know, people may not be filling their oil tanks or, you know, bumping their temperatures up to where they need to be to keep their pipes from freezing. So if you have elderly neighbors or, you know, someone who's looking after, just, you know, check on each other. It's important, you know, to do that because we are all members of a community. And lastly, just I hope everyone has a safe and happy holiday season, and I'll see you in 2024.
Next year. Thank you, Joe. You want to follow up?
Yeah, real quick, young gentleman sitting out here in the audience, you've been sitting here all night long with a pen and paper, school project, what are you doing? Want to come up for a second and explain it to us?
So, I'm a-
Come on in, come on in. Just relax. Tell us your name.
So my name is Henry.
Yes.
I'm just, so I'm in the Boy Scouts, and I just, I'm doing this for a requirement.
Okay. Is there anything we can help you with?
No, I've already gotten them.
Would you like Linda to write an essay for you? I mean, it's just, it's there. She's really good at it.
Did you have any questions on anything you saw or anything we did that was a little weird or that could have looked a little weird? I don't know, that maybe seemed weird.
He's like, no, no.
Which troop are you in?
Oh, I just want to go home.
Trip 103. Yeah, he just wants to leave.
Well, I just wanted to make sure there's anything we can help you with.
He did his time, he did his duty.
You can reach out to us at the office.
Your father owes me five bucks for doing this. I just was wondering. Good luck.